Kick off.
Chair, do you have any apologies? Or is everyone here that we're?
Everyone's here that should be here with the exception of councillor Williams, who's just trying to join the meeting.
Yeah, but we haven't had any actual apologies.
No.
From, you know, formal apologies and so on. Thank you.
So, good evening councillors, ladies, gentlemen and all. I am councillor Emmett McKenna, Chair of the Planning Applications Committee of Reading Borough Council. I would like to welcome you to the Planning Applications Committee, which is again being held online as permitted by the Coronavirus Act 2020. The public and the press can observe the meeting by following the link from our website. Agenda papers, including the update pack, have been published on the council's website. To help those observing the meeting, we will be presenting some information on slides as we proceed. Before we start, councillors and officers attending will be asked to introduce themselves. This is for the benefit of the public and also to ensure that all are in attendance as expected and that they can hear and speak to the meeting. Members have been asked to make me aware if they wish to speak to an item in advance. This does not prevent additional contributions being made, but I ask all councillors to notify me when you wish to speak in the chat section of the screens and then wait to be called. When not speaking, please, well councillors, put their microphones on mute. When called to speak, please unmute your microphone and pause briefly to allow for the slight time delay in connection. I'm aware, I'm aware that we are at the mercy of individuals broadband services and it is possible that loss of connection may occur. However, as long as we have five members still in the meeting, we will be quiet. I will now do a roll call of councillors. As I say your name, could you introduce yourselves to the meeting? I am councillor Emmett McKenna, Chair of the Planning Applications Committee, and I represent Lee Ward. I will call on the other members of the committee alphabetically. Councillors, please, will you state your name and the ward you represent? Councillor Devine, please introduce yourself to the meeting.
Ricky Devine, Lib Dem councillor for Tynehurst Ward.
Councillor Ennis?
Yep, councillor John Ennis, councillor for Southcott Ward and also Lead Councillor for Housing.
Thank you. Councillor Lovelock?
I'm Joe Lovelock, I'm councillor for Norcot Ward.
Councillor Page?
Councillor Tony Page, Lead Member for Environment, Planning and Transport and Deputy Leader of the Council and an Abbey Ward councillor.
Thank you. Councillor Robinson?
Good evening Chair, good evening everyone. Councillor Simon Robinson, representing Peppard Ward.
Thank you. Councillor Rowland?
Councillor Karen Rowland from Abbey Ward and I'm the Lead Member for Culture, Heritage and Recreation.
Councillor Sokalet?
I'm councillor Ayush Sokalet, representing Cavisham Ward and Vice Chair of the Planning Applications Committee.
Good. Councillor Stamford Bill?
Good evening Chair, good evening everyone. Councillor Jane Stamford Bill, Peppard Ward.
Thank you. Councillor Josh Williams? Councillor Josh Williams has indicated previously that he's having some current IT issues and we will proceed in the meeting regardless and ask him to introduce himself at the point in which he can join. I will now, thank you councillors, I would also like to introduce you to the officers who are in attendance tonight. Julie Williams is our Acting Planning Manager. She is our Senior Planning Advisor and is responsible for the work of the planning team. She will also advise me tonight on any matters relating to planning policy, guidance and practice. Richard Eto'o is our Development Management Team Leader and he is responsible for the work of the Planning Applications Team. Mark Waringham is our Policy Team Leader and is responsible for drafting and interpreting planning policy. Case officers, Brian Conlon and Alison Amoa are presenting application reports this evening. Wendy Badison is a planning solicitor in the council's legal department. She is here to advise me on planning and local government law. This is to ensure that when the committee makes a decision, it is both within its powers and legally signed. Jenny Hazel, Simon Hill and Nikki Simpson are committee service officers. They are taking meeting minutes of the meeting and producing the live broadcast. With the introductions out of the way, let us now turn to the agenda. For voting on information items of this meeting in part one of the agenda, I will ask, are we content to proceed and pause for five seconds? I will take silence to mean that all members are agreed. Minutes of the last meeting, these are to be found pages seven to eight of the agenda pack. Members, can you confirm that the minutes are correct record of the meeting held on the 9th of September 2020? Great. Thank you. That is agreed by silence. Turning now to declarations of interest. Do any members have any declarations of interest which they wish to bring to the attention of the committee? Thank you. Agenda item three is questions. We have a question from councillor Josh Williams on locally listed buildings. Unfortunately, as he's not available at the moment due to IT problems, I'm going to use my chair's discretion to move it back in the agenda and will deal with it again after the end of the other information items if councillor Josh Williams is still unable to join the meeting. Thank you. We will proceed to agenda item seven, which is being brought forward in our agenda to facilitate the discussion, the planning white paper and other national planning considerations. Please can I ask Mark Waringham to introduce the item? Mark, are you available to introduce the item? Unfortunately, it appears that Mark is also not currently in the meeting. I love IT at times. So we will then proceed to the next items in our agenda, which is agenda item four, which is planning pages.
I think Mark is there now, so perhaps if you want to do that item, thank you.
Yes. Mark, if you're available, can you please introduce the report for agenda item seven, which you should see on the screen, the slides?
Thank you Chair, sorry, some connection difficulties there. And this report highlights two consultations by central government that would have significant implications for the planning system. First is the planning white paper and the second is a consultation on changes to the existing planning system. The planning white paper would represent the most fundamental shake-up of the planning system since it was first introduced in 1947. Its starting assumption is that the planning system represents a block on development and is largely responsible for the current housing crisis. In order to address this, the government's view is that the planning system needs to be completely overhauled. The proposals in the white paper are many and wide-ranging and are summarised in the covering report. It proposes that local plans are substantially slimmed down and that once land is identified for development in the plan, that the application process for that land is much reduced or even in some cases removed. It also proposes an overall overhaul of how contributions are made to local infrastructure. At the same time, it places an emphasis on design in general and beauty in particular that seems somewhat at odds with the deregulation elsewhere in the proposals. These proposals would require a new planning act and the expressed intention is for it to be in place in time to lead to new local plans being put in place across the country by the end of this Parliament. The draft response, draft by the council is included as appendix one to your report. This has been approved by policy committee on the 28th of September, but delegation has been secured to take on board any changes to the response that Planning Applications Committee wishes to make before the response is submitted by the deadline of 29th of October. The other consultation is on changes to the current planning system. These would be changes that could be made relatively quickly and easily to the existing system before the proposals in the white paper are in place and some of these changes that only require national policy or guidance changes could even be brought in before the end of this year. This consultation covers four matters: changes to the standard methodology for assessing housing need, introduction of a new affordable housing product, first homes, raising the threshold for securing affordable housing to 40 or 50 dwellings and the expansion of the permission in principle application route to major developments. These changes are highlighted in the covering report and a council responses include as appendix two, which was also approved by policy committee. The consultation closed on 1st of October and the council's response has therefore already been submitted. So this is included for your information. Thank you Chair.
Thank you. I will call councillor Page to address the meeting first.
Chair, thank you for that. As a member of policy committee, we discussed this a little over a week ago and approved Mark's draft response, which is a very comprehensive demolition of the proposals that secured all party support. Ourselves, Conservatives, the Liberal, who's also here this evening, and councillor White representing the Greens. And it's welcome that across local government, not only in Reading, but also across the country, as reflected at the LGA as well, there is huge resistance and opposition to these proposals. It's worth saying that the problem that the government has identified is not one, is one that is not solved by unpicking the planning system, but would be better solved by addressing the hoarding and the reluctance of volume house builders to deliver on the hundreds of thousands of planning consents that they have got for new house building. And it was only last month that Shelter produced one of a number of regular reports that showed that nearly 400,000 houses have been given planning permission in the last 10 years and they remain unbuilt. And the reason they remain unbuilt, as the Letwin review of 2018 showed, is that private developers will delay releasing developments if there's a risk of flooding the market. It's basic economics that even the youngest will understand and that is the key problem and that will not be addressed in any way by the government's so-called reforms. Also, we need much more investment in social and affordable housing. And as was, as is known in the Reading area, we might develop, we might have high-level numbers consented in terms of planning permissions, but they aren't necessarily the right mix and we need more affordable, genuinely affordable housing locally and the planning system does not enable us to deliver that. And those are the reforms that the government should be looking at, but they are not. And the other point I would make Chair, which has been picked up by august publications such as the Daily and Sunday Telegraph, is that the changes that the government has proposed in terms of house building targets, using one of their favourite mechanisms these days, an algorithm, which of course has been proven and tested as being very successful, will increase numbers in the south and decrease numbers in the north. And so much for the levelling up agenda, because going with that new housing will of course have to be infrastructure investment. And so far for more investment going north, less will go north and the levelling up agenda will not be in any way matched. And as Bob Sealy, the member for the Conservative Member for the Isle of Wight, has rightly said, Britons in the red wall seats will see little change in their communities as infrastructure cash goes to the shires in the south. And the final point that I would make about the changes Chair, just in case there's anybody in doubt about the strength of the cross-party opposition to these proposals, is my good friend John Housal, the leader of Conservative Wokingham Council, who has written on the Conservative Home website, and I'll just quote this because it's language that I might even be diffident about losing, using. He talks of the government in this term, in these terms. "It's the government's contempt for local government is profound. Meaningless virtual signalling such as expecting new development to be beautiful and giving communities and neighbourhoods an earlier and more meaningful voice in the future of their area hides the reality that the Ministry of Housing, Communities and Local Government is proposing to give pretty much all control to developers to carpetbag the nation." And that starts a rant, I won't quote anymore, but that is the high-level summary from John Housal. So I would hope that there would be continuing cross-party support for the submission that Mark has drafted and I would commend it to colleagues this evening Chair. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Page. Councillor Rowland, you've indicated you wish to speak?
Yes, thank you Chair. I certainly agree with everything councillor Page said and I was really grateful to note in the policy committee that this was unanimously supported across the board. I'd like to draw very quickly the public's attention to what the potential of this planning paper can do for the public's voice. People have heard it many times, that for a long time I was an activist and I would often come to the Planning Applications Committee and I would speak out about planning applications that concerned me or my neighbourhood. This is something that would fundamentally change and I have to say, now sitting on this committee, how very critical that voice from the community and that involvement with the community in shaping developments, especially large developments, working with, working with communities and even the smaller, more neighbourhood developments where we have to oftentimes decide a rather fine line, is really, really critical. I know that people sometimes feel like we don't have a perfect system here and that maybe we don't listen, but I can assure you that we do and we listen very intently. And what we are trying to do is to work within the system that we have now to ensure that Reading's residents' voices are heard and that that development is able to best coincide with that. And unfortunately, the proposal here would basically remove a resident's ability to engage in that almost, for a larger development, almost from the start. It's not quite sure exactly how they would propose to do that, but you would be involved in another possible, another redo of our local plan or whatever and then that would be it until there, until there becomes an inspector that's there at the very end and you might be able to chime in then. But unless we're talking about smaller, smaller issues and smaller developments, which might affect in a conservation area, which might come under a protected situation that they're plotting out there, that's kind of it for the democratic voice, I feel, and for the chance to hear residents, which is just so critical. So I'm really supportive. I thank Mark Waringham for a very, very robust statement and I also commend this. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Devine, can you please address the committee?
Thank you Chair. Yes, I would like to reiterate that this document that's produced by Mark Waringham, an excellent document by the way, and thanks to him for all the work he's put into it. But I'd like to reiterate that it has all party support, not just in Reading but across the country. I've never seen a proposal attract so much unified support against it ever. I cannot remember anything like this because local government up and down the country is objecting to the idea of a centralised planning system, ruled from Westminster, that tells local authorities what they can and can't build. This is just a total, it is totally against all ideas of delegating power to the, to local authorities and local people and local democracy indeed. So we are totally opposed to this. We are also totally opposed to the attack on affordable housing, which is in the second part of the document. Changing the threshold for affordable housing and the idea that first homes, that people buying new homes should be taking money away from what is truly affordable rental housing is frankly no way to provide a solution to the housing crisis that this country is currently experiencing. So we are totally opposed to this and I'm very glad to see that we've got all parties support, as I said, both in Reading and up and down the country. Thank you Chair.
Thank you councillor Devine. Councillor Stamford Bill, could you please address the committee?
Thank you Chair. I'll be brief. I know this was fully debated and then agreed at policy committee, but I would like to reiterate what councillor Page has said. One of the major bars to house building at the moment has been land banking by the developers. It hasn't been the local authorities failing to provide planning permission on time. We have hardworking offices in our planning departments who work very hard and I know there was one site on the Henley Road in my ward which had about four or five planning permissions granted before finally something actually, somebody broke ground there. So, you know, developers need to look at what they're doing before they demand a complete shake-up of the planning system. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Ennis, please address the committee?
Yeah, thank you. I will not be that long. I think it's really important to thank all the political parties for being united in this, including councillor Stamford Bill. I think it's really helpful. The issue really is national government versus local government because numerous Conservative councils are finding this very concerning. So we are united as local governments against this situation. Interesting, a number of Conservative MPs were also concerned about the issues. I'd like to think they're also concerned about affordable housing, the loss of 31,000 a year or 31,000 as housing news said today. So it's really, really helpful to hear that. That's what I was going to say. I was going to say other stuff, but because of the helpfulness of all the councillors cross-party, I will curtail my rant.
Thank you. Councillor Ennis, and then I believe I'm the last person to speak on this item. Now, others have addressed the principles in here and I agree entirely with councillor Stamford Bill that there is a lack of focus on the delivery where a planning committee and nationally planning committees approve more than 90% of all applications in front of us that come to decision and then win a number of those which are repeated again endorsing our decision. Yet schemes routinely do not get built out. Hopefully, the report provides numbers on those, so, which are much more succinct than me. I will focus more on the process of how government hopes that we could deliver this new planning system, which is entirely dependent on the delivery of as-yet-not-even-scoped-for-IT-infrastructure. We're still waiting for a renewal for the customs software that was first muted in 2015 as some of the imports in my current job, that doesn't look so well. We remember the IT issues that we had with the NHS previously and again with the track and trace. Government, and that's governments of all stripes, including my own political party, have had a relatively poor history of delivering appropriate IT solutions. And I'm particularly concerned about a proposal which is entirely predicated on an as-yet-undelivered IT proposal. And as properly elucidated, that the legislation could be passed before the software is up and running, which will then mean that under-resourced planning committees, which will be further under-resourced with the reduction in application fees, will be left trying to scramble on pen and paper to do something that's not designed to fit within the legislative framework. At present, this seems rather a half-baked proposal, which is why so many members of local government across all political parties who have had any involvement in any sort of planning process are fairly unanimous in our rejections. While we recognise that there are elements within the planning system that can be improved, this seems a wrong-headed approach and the sooner it's buried, taking on board the consultations through this system, the better. So then we can move forward to a more appropriate, digitally-inclusive planning system for this century moving forward. Thank you. That's the end of my comments. At this point, I would like to welcome councillor Josh Williams to the meeting, who's been able to overcome some of the IT challenges, which may affect any portal. Councillor Josh Williams, could you please introduce yourself to the meeting for the record?
Thank you very much Chair. Yes, I'm glad to be here eventually. I am Josh Williams, councillor for Park Ward.
Thank you. Councillor Williams, we will now move to agenda item four, which is planning appeals.
Shall we not formally approve?
Ah, yes. I do apologise councillor Devine. I forgot to ask the question. Councillors, are we happy to endorse the excellent work of Mark Waringham in the response to this proposal?
Agreed.
Agreed.
Thank you. It's unanimous across all members and all parties. Then hopefully, we'll now move to planning appeals, agenda item four, which are pages nine to 12 of your agenda and also subject to an update report.
Chair, did you want to do the question first?
We'll do the question at the end of the information items.
Oh, okay.
As indicated. Thank you. Agenda item four.
Thank you Chair. So the report on planning appeals is at page nine of your pack. This report shows that we have had one appeal lodged since your last meeting, but at the time of preparing this report, there had been no decisions received. However, we had last week received the decision for 39 Brunswick Hill and this decision letter, which dismissed that appeal, is provided in full in your update pack. I've got no further comments to make on that decision at this moment, but you're asked to note the report. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Page, you wish to speak?
Chair, thank you. I just want to comment briefly on 39 Brunswick Hill. This is obviously a very welcome decision. As the inspector notes in paragraph 13, the application was recommended for approval by officers, but the committee again took the decision to refuse the application. This was the third refusal in respect of this site in less than three years and a third refusal that was upheld by a different inspector. We've now had three different inspectors looking at appeals on this site and they've all upheld. looking at appeals on this site, and they've all upheld the decisions of the committee. And I would particularly draw your attention to paragraph 10, where the inspector talks about the addition of a disproportionate rear extension would overwhelm the building to the detriment of its significance as a heritage asset, notwithstanding the lack of any formal local or national designation. Furthermore, the resultant depth of the building would jar with surrounding residential properties which are of a more domestic scale. Now, in the unlikely event, Chair, that the applicant is listening to this meeting, I would ask through you how many times, how many refusals before you get the message, not only from us, but also from three separate planning inspectors? What we want to see is a sensitive use of this building, perhaps a small number of flats inside. I do not think we need more HMOs in this area or indeed in this building, but it's not for us to prescribe what should go in there. But what we can say with confidence is that hopefully, the planning inspectorate reinforcing our views locally will mean that the applicant will go away and look at doing something with this building without adding disproportionate rear extensions and hacking it around. Get the message, please. Get it loud and clear. Do something with the building as it currently is, and don't be greedy and face yet another costly planning appeal and refusal. Thank you, Chair.
I'm now going to call councillor Roland, who is also indicated.
Thank you, Chair. I would again agree with councillor Page on this point, but I'd also like to draw home the fact to anyone that might be watching too, that that this is really something that was was decided on the basis of its heritage value, despite the fact that it's not nationally listed, despite the fact that it was not selected for a local listing in this case. But it is a heritage asset, and it is responsible to its streetscape, it's responsible to the townscape, and it is responsible in the way that it helps to create Brunswick Hill. And I would concur with councillor Page that I do hope that the owner of the building gets the message and understands that that to work within the constraints of what is really a beautiful building is what is very clearly directed towards him. I believe that it could be a multi-tenanted property, perhaps not an HMO or something that I know has been bandied about in the media. But but there are certainly possibilities, and it is already used with multiple tenants there. So there's many possibilities within the beautiful structure. And I think we all have to realise that if we own a building of character, a listed building or a locally listed building, or we're in a conservation area, we're the protectors of that heritage. And it's not always ours in some cases just to tear down and do what we want. And I do hope the message has come across loud and clear. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, councillor Roland. As I have no further indications from councillors, I will now call Julie Williams, our planning manager, to address the committee.
Thank you, Chair. Just just taking up the points from councillor Roland and councillor Page. Just to confirm that the applicant and his agent has been in touch with officers already to discuss the next steps forward, and we are already setting up a meeting also involving our new conservation and urban design officer to be part of that meeting. So I would say watch this space and hopefully the next application for this site will be more acceptable. Thank you.
Thank you. Most welcome. We will hope that is the case. Now, as I have no further indications, I suggest that we note the report as printed. That is noted, and we'll move to agenda item five, prior approvals. And I've lost my place. Do apologize. I will call on the appropriate officer to the item. Sorry, I have lost my place.
That's okay. Now, I could take this one, Chair. Thank you. So this report provides you with an update on the effect on fee income and affordable housing implications arising from prior approval applications. And it also provides you with a simple number table of applications received and dealt with since your last planning applications committee. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. I have had no indications to speak on this item, so I propose that we note the report. Our councillors agreed. Thank you. Again, silence is all that's required. We will move to agenda item six, the performance monitoring report, Development Management Service, which is for quarters one and two of 2020 to 2021.
Yes, thank you, Chair. This report sets out information on applications considered over the past two quarters with comparisons with the same two quarters in the previous year. In summary, taking into account the challenges of the past seven months, the determination of planning applications remains above the performance targets set by government, and appeal decisions are supporting council decisions. Overall, I am very pleased with the performance of all the planning service staff. You're asked to note the report. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Councillors, I believe councillor Josh Williams has indicated he wishes to speak previously, and I will now call him. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Chair. Two things briefly. First of all, I wanted to take this opportunity to thank officers. It's not just the work in this performance monitoring report, but I think that the reports that we receive to committee and the support that we get as members is excellent from our planning team. So I wanted to say thank you. And I also wanted to ask a question, if I might. It looks to me as though, but please correct me if I'm wrong, it looks as though the total applications when compared year on year have dropped by about 25%. And my initial reaction was that that was probably Covid, but I wonder if officers have a more enlightened view. Is that drop a Covid effect or other other factors? The changes that the government's proposing, are they confusing people? Are they making people less likely to come forward with planning applications? Or is there anything else going on in the world of planning? Or are we purely in a pandemic? Anyway, thank you, Chair.
Thank you. And I will call upon our available expert.
Well, I'll try my best. Thank you, Chair. No, you're correct. The stats do seem to show that for Reading Borough Council, that the applications for the first quarter dropped by about 4% and the second quarter dropped by 25%. And I've looked at the national statistics of all, you know, other authorities as well. And that seems to be the trend though nationally, 5% drop in the first quarter, 20% drop in the second quarter. So I would suggest that it is due to the pandemic for these first two quarters. So in quarter one, we were still dealing with applications that were still coming through the machinery, as it were, agents were still submitting applications. And then it's only when quarter two came along that we were noticing the effect on our agents and other, you know, they have to go out and do site surveys and things before they put an application in, that sort of thing. However, I can confirm that certainly from our stats we've got from August, September, things seem to be picking up a bit, certainly in our fee income side. So we need to see what happens. I think now that we've got used to working in this new setup, we're having more meetings, we're having pre-app meetings, that's carrying on. You know, fingers crossed, it may well be that we will see a lift in quarters three and four. But I'm not an expert, and I don't think anyone else can really judge what's happening here. And it could well also be, I'm thinking maybe the lift that we've had in the last quarter, maybe because people are now trying to realise the value of their land, being unsure about whether if they don't develop it, what will happen if the economy takes a dive. But I don't know, I'm not an expert, but that's my best analysis of the situation as we see it at the moment. Thank you. Does that help?
I'm sure it very much does. Do any other councillors wish to speak to this item? Then I'm sure I'm going to say something very non-controversial this time, that all councillors will agree. Thank you very much for your service, because this has been an incredibly challenging year. Just meeting the statutory targets with the amount of disruption that's happened in the planning service and in the world in total is a fantastic achievement, and officers should be rightly proud. Thank you. And then I will ask councillors, do they agree to note the report as printed?
Agreed.
And if any councillor wishes to echo, rather than just in the chat, they're fully welcome to. We will now move to agenda item three, which was questions. And I will call upon councillor Josh Williams to ask the question of this committee.
Thank you, Chair. Again, apologies for late arrival. My question is on the local listing process. A year ago, I asked, oh, the questions appeared on my screen, sorry, that was slightly off. A year ago, I asked about the process for local listing of Reading's important buildings, which at the moment is conducted by officers and decided by the lead councillor for planning. The answer was that following discussion with the lead member, a review would be undertaken of the whole local listing process and a report brought back for discussion at PAC. Could the chair update us on what progress has been made over the last 12 months on making the local listing process more proactive, more public-facing, and part of the democratic work of the planning committee? And thank you, Chair.
Thank you. So within the printed answer, I've provided the answers to the questions that councillor Williams previously asked on the 9th of October 2019. As an appendix, I'm not going to read out those previous responses, but they are helpful to let the context for councillors and any members of the public who will read this in the future. Also, I'm going to paraphrase rather than read the answer completely into the record, because I do realise I write a lot. The direct question, we got on with the work. We had the initial conversations and scoping, which was begun, and the end officer was assigned to do the work. It's done a considerable amount of background research. This review was then initiated late February and carried on into March. This was to involve liaising with Historic England Planning Advisory Service, any of the interested civic societies and other bodies within Reading, to get the views of elected members and with a number of other local planning authorities. The objective being to create best practice, rather than rush to create something that we're just going to have to change again. This would have resulted in a report coming to this committee for us to note, potentially with options involved. And then the recommendation from this committee would be forwarded to the constitutionally appropriate committee to change the powers. Then our world changed, as with everyone else is well aware. This is readily evidenced by our virtual meeting this evening. Understandably, it became impossible to make good progress. As all councillors or any of our many varied regular attenders are unfortunately aware, council budgets are not very good position. This is particularly true of the planning service, which has had to be entirely funded by fee income moving forward, which often leaves planners stretched. And again, I will commend them for their activities. This led to the necessary refocus on core business of determining applications under the current Covid emergency and the changes to the Planning Act of 2020, which allows us to have the virtual meeting. Said, I'd like to reassure you that neither I nor the lead member for Strategic Environment Planning and Transport, who is a member of this committee, nor officers have forgotten the commitment to bring a report to this committee. Indeed, I can report a positive outcome of the initial scoping exercise, which along with the visit of the Historic Places Panel of Historic England, identified both the need and opportunity for the creation of a new specialist post within the planning directorate. Our first conservation and urban design officer has joined the authority in mid-September, and the refresh of the local listing process is already underway as one of their assigned duties. As they are still in the onboarding process, I'm afraid I can't provide a definitive timeline at this point. I will instead ask your indulgence to return to this discussion in our next meeting of the 4th of November. Thank you, councillor Williams. Do you have any supplementary questions to ask?
Yeah, thank you, Chair. Thank you very much for that answer, and thanks for providing it to me a little in advance. That was very kind of you. And it all sounds really positive. Thank you. My only question is, will there be an agenda item at the November meeting on this subject, or are you going to roll my question forward and provide a little more detail then?
My intention would be to roll your question forward, which will be fully amended and essentially to change the question to be, can you update the answer provided in October? If you're acceptable. That will allow our officer to have the full idea of where the work is coming, and then I'll be able to tell you when the report will be coming to committee. I just can't at this point. Do any other councillors have any comments or questions at this point? Then we'll move to the items to be decided within our agenda. The first item, which has public speaking attached, is item eight, which is 71 to 73 Cavisham Road. And I will call on the case officer to introduce his report.
Thank you, Chair. Good evening, committee. As members will be aware, this application relates to 7173 Cavisham Road. The proposal seeks permission for the replacement of the existing building with 44 residential units and 194 square metres of flexible commercial space at ground floor. Three buildings on site were historically former brewery buildings during the 19th century, and as a group were recently included in Reading Borough Council's list of locally important buildings and structures. These buildings are therefore classified as non-designated heritage assets for the purpose of national and local planning policy. The buildings on site are not listed in the statutory sense and therefore not subject to much stricter controls and statutory tests under the Listed Building Conservation Area Act. However, as being non-designated heritage assets, they are considered to be of sufficient local significance to be included on the council's local list. As such, policy EN4 of our local plan contains the primary criteria such proposals must be considered against. The main agenda acknowledges this clearly, that via its loss, the development would harm the non-designated heritage asset and further compromise the setting of the remaining buildings in that identified cluster. However, policy EN4 and the MPPF contain the need for officers to have regard to the overall public benefits of the development in undertaking the balanced judgment required. To aid discussion here this evening, it is worth taking the opportunity to summarise to the committee those main benefits of the proposal that members must weigh up when considering the test applied by policy EN4 and the loss of the building in question. These are the economic contribution through redevelopment of the vacant and unattractive commercial floor space, contribution to the borough's housing land supply position of 44 units, provision of an appropriate mix and density of development in relation to its sustainable location, securing an above-policy compliant contribution towards affordable housing provision on the site and elsewhere in the borough, visual uplift via the colonnade and flexible commercial space on what is a busy and often unpleasant road junction, meaningful and innovative contribution to the town's natural environment via a green wall, two landscape terraces, tree planting and soft landscaping, the quality of wall, two landscape terraces, tree planting and soft landscaping, the quality of residential accommodation for future occupiers, including measures to support their health and wellbeing, improved sustainability through compliance with the council's enhanced energy efficiency and sustainability standards with regard to our declared climate emergency, dedicated cycle infrastructure on Northfield Road to connect existing parts of the town's cycle network, the contribution of £92,400 towards improvement and extensions of existing facilities in the Thames Parks, and finally provision of membership of a car club for the residents. As members will have seen in the agenda report, it is a complex exercise in balancing these identified benefits against the asset's established level of significance as required by our local plan. Officers have concluded that the positive economic, social and natural environmental benefits of development as a whole outweigh the individual significance of the building being lost. Of course, over the past 15 months, council officers have been involved in proposal on this site. At the forefront of office of minds have been the implications of any proposal on the status of the site, given its complexity and the policy regime which covers such proposals. All matters have been explored in their fullest extent in the committee report in order to allow the item to be presented as clearly as possible for you here this evening. As with any recommendation, this one has certainly not been taken lightly. The sensitive nature of the proposal and the loss of a locally listed building has not made this an easy conclusion to reach. Nonetheless, officers consider that the most appropriate balance has been struck between public benefits and public benefits of the scheme and the harm it will cause. Whilst there's clearly strong public sentiment around the scheme and the recommendation is undoubtedly contentious, the report conclusions are based on the explicit requirements of our local plan and the balancing exercise required by national policy in relation to non-designated heritage assets. It's hoped that the level of information available is helpful in allowing members to exercise their own informed judgement on the item here this evening. With regard to updates, since the agenda report was published, members will note that a petition has been reported in the update and additional representations received. An addendum to the financial viability appraisal has also been made publicly available by the applicant to support the affordable housing offer. That can be seen in appendix one of the update. Thank you very much, Chair.
Thank you. We'll now call for public speaking. Thank you. And we have two members of the public that wish to speak to this item. We will call the objectors first, Evelyn Williams and David Neil to speak. They will have five minutes to share between them, at which point we may ask questions of them. And then we'll move forward to then call upon the applicant, who we may again ask questions of. We will call first upon Evelyn Williams. Please address the committee.
Evelyn Williams, Chair of the Reading Conservation Area Advisory Committee. Thank you for the opportunity to address this meeting. The Drews Building is not in a conservation area, and so you may wonder why Reading CAC is taking an interest. Part of our wider brief is a concern for Reading's heritage in general, and we have submitted several applications ourselves to the local listing of buildings and structures. The application for local listing of the former Dausens Maltings was made by the Bell Tower Community Association. The very comprehensive application detailed the architectural as well as the social and industrial significance of the building, taking advice from Amber Patrick, the recognised maltings expert in England. The application was accepted by Reading Borough Council. The Bell Tower area is one of special character, and local residents have been working towards its adoption as a local area of special character, should RBC establish a framework in future for this. We support the aspiration of the local community and the retention of this significant element of Reading's heritage. RBC's heritage consultant objected to the development because of the substantial harm to the building. He said, "The building, especially along Northfield Road, retains its original character as a maltings building, but has lost part of its setting due to the construction of a group of characterless and soulless modern developments around it. The presence of the building in the street scene represents a remnant of one of Reading's most important former industries, brewing. The last physical remains of industrial Reading are increasingly being lost, adding to its importance locally." Reading CAC consider that appropriate and acceptable adaptations and extensions could be made to this building for it to be converted to housing. We request that this application is rejected, and those options are considered in a future submission from the developer. Thank you.
Thank you. I will now call on David Neil. Please introduce yourself to the meeting, and then you will have three minutes.
David Neil from the Bell Tower Community Association. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. The Cavisham Road area has a distinct Victorian character and has been recommended as a local area of special character to reflect its history and the quality of its architecture. No building in the area is currently over four stories. A seven-storey block would make a fundamental change to an area of mostly two-story Victorian housing and set a dangerous precedent. References made to the proposed development across Cavisham Road as if it's already been approved, the committee will no doubt be aware that it hasn't, and proposals for the height of this development's Cavisham Road frontage have been strongly objected to by local residents. Daylight and sunlight reports refer to Monmouth Court, but only make cursory mention of terraces in Northfield Road, which we believe would be more severely affected. The Bell Tower Community Association understands the need for development in the area, but not at any cost. We appreciate that the development would make a contribution towards Reading's much-needed affordable housing stock and other benefits, but why couldn't a more sensitive development on a scale that's harmonious with its historic surroundings do the same? The existing building could be eminently convertible to good quality residential accommodation. Much of this part of Cavisham Road does indeed have mediocre and, to be frank, poor quality architecture. An imaginative developer would embrace the road's main historic landmark building. Mediocre surroundings don't justify demolition. It's the surrounding buildings that need replacing, not the landmark. As Evelyn was saying, the building has now achieved local listing status. It's been agreed by the council that it's worth preserving. One of the oldest buildings in the area, it has support from the local community, Conservation Area Advisory Committee, Reading Civic Society, and the nationally recognised expert on malt houses, and we have a petition with well over 1,000 signatories in support. How could a council list the building then recommend demolition only a few months later? Finally, the committee needs to consider very carefully the implications of destruction of a recognised heritage asset. You can't replace heritage. Once it's gone, it's gone. I and many others urge the committee to demonstrate the council's commitment to preserving our heritage by refusing this planning application. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillors, do we have any questions of the objectors? Thank you. I have no indications from any councillors, so I'd like to thank you for addressing the committee. I will now call upon the applicant to address the committee. Can you please introduce yourself to the meeting? And then you will have five minutes to make a statement and maybe ask questions.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and good evening to you and committee members. My name is Samuel Berg, and I am the applicant for this planning application. Firstly, I'd like to say that I'm very grateful for the time and opportunity that we've had during the course of this application to work together with our case officer, Brian Cunron, the housing team, the independent design review panel, and all other departments to bring us to where we are this evening. We're excited to bring this application in front of members with all of the benefits that it brings. I know Brian mentioned them earlier, but I'd like to just reiterate that we're bringing 44 much-needed homes to the area, 34% of affordable housing provision, a new modern commercial unit, a high-quality, carefully considered design, sustainable approach to transport, retention of the existing maltings buildings to the rear of the site, and positive benefits to the local area with a green wall and further landscaping. S2 acquired this building following the closure and subsequent administration of the Drews business, following an extensive marketing period by local agent Haslam's. During this period, there was no interest from any owner-occupiers or tenants looking to retain the existing premises. Significant changes in the retail sector mean less businesses are occupying premises of this nature. This has been further compounded by COVID-19, and in this context, the reoccupation of the existing floor space is not an option. As a forward-thinking progressive development company, specialising in bringing forward vacant sites, we could see that the building had reached the end of its natural life, and through good design and working closely with all relevant stakeholders, we could bring this site forward and enhance the local area. This process started in January 2019 with your planning team, and we submitted an application in November of that year. Shortly after this, the site was subject to an application to add it to Reading's local listings, which I stress should not be confused with statutory listing process or any of the associated protections. The building wasn't listed when we acquired the site, and whilst we and our heritage consultants are not necessarily in agreement with the site's inclusion on the local listing, we've worked extremely hard to update our approach and the need to progress with the delivery of this proposal as soon as possible. There are significant costs associated with the site remaining vacant and the lengthy time and costs associated with the progression of a planning appeal. We have factored all of this into our appraisals, funding positions, and the risks we are willing to take as developer, and this has allowed us to provide the development with the proposed affordable housing offer, which is in excess of policy, thereby providing further public benefit to the development and allowing the overall balance of the application to receive a positive officer's recommendation. I feel that the updated affordable housing offer will deliver significant benefits for the overall sustainability of the proposed development and the creation of a broader socio-economic profile for future residents on the site, but also enable earlier development and delivery of this vacant site. This adds up to a significant social benefit that can be realised with members giving their support to this application. We are excited about the scheme, and with a positive decision tonight, being enabled to progress with a significant investment into the area and being part of the growth of the immediate catchment as it benefits from improved infrastructure and surrounding future developments. I really hope that members see the time, effort and work that has gone into this application, and that you are able to see the merits and benefits that the overall redevelopment of this vacant, dilapidated building whilst retaining the rear old maltings buildings will bring to this area, and that you will support your officer's recommendation. Thank you for your time, and I'd like to add that myself and my team are available on this call to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Councillors, are there any questions that you wish to ask at this point? I have no indications.
Chair?
Yes. Councillor Roland, please address.
Yes, I'm sorry, I put in a query there. So, yes, I'd like to ask the applicant a question. Thank you very much for coming along this evening. I would like to ask you, if I could, I'm sure you're probably aware that the application has garnered a bit of interest in the media and petitions and things like that. So, part of this whole process that we go through, especially with developments like this, is to engage with the public, with local residents and things like that. So I was kind of curious if you could outline for the committee what those steps were that you took, and example to us perhaps some of the things that you took on board during that kind of iterative process to arrive where you are today. And I'm asking a question in terms of how that engagement was with the community and what kind of things you took on board. Thank you.
Thank you, yes. Very happy to answer that, unless my team want to step in any time they can. But we held a public exhibition locally over two days where we provided a number of details on the scheme, what we were proposing. And that gained some interest. I think we wrote to the immediate catchment area, neighbours, neighbouring residents, to invite them along to our public exhibition. The whole team was there. Residents and locals were able to leave feedback on the scheme and what they saw. And whilst I realise that the scheme has received a lot of local interest, I wonder as to whether, how much of that relates to Drews as a business. I know they were there for almost 40 years operating on the site, and in my local area, I know there are businesses that have had that sort of local position in many people's lives. But the business that they were in, the premises, the layout and the type of building, made it very difficult for them to operate, and ultimately that business went into administration. The premises was marketed and very little interest came forward, other than from developers looking to bring the site forward for redevelopment. We engaged with the council on design, and we faced an independent design review panel at Reading offices, which led us to make changes and observations to the design to reflect the existing heritage within the existing building, and add that to some of our design, which we embraced and were very happy to do so. Our public exhibition was in July of last year. I'm trying to think of anything else that would be useful. The design review panel was part of, part of that process, we reduced the height of the building from what we originally had intended at pre-application stage. We just, we also altered the roof landscapes to reflect the heritage within the existing building. So we did make some changes as a result of that design review panel. Whilst some of the members of the public that came to our exhibition were generally opposed to what we were providing, there were a number of local residents who came and supported what we were providing. So hopefully that answers the question, councillor Owens.
So Roland, you've indicated you have a further question. Please continue.
Well, I think I was waffling on that. Well, I will ask just one follow-up. So you were saying that you, through the course of this iterative process, you were talking about certain steps that you took as a result of that consultation. So you lowered the height, was that correct? So maybe if you could go into a little more detail on that. And then you also talked something about the roof or something? I mean, if you could just go into a little bit more detail. I'm really trying to drill down and find out how you responded to the community in terms of your design, if I could. So, yeah, if you could clarify those points, if those were the, if that's what you did, then.
Sorry, can everybody hear me?
I'm on date, thank you.
Good. So, yes, we, I think one of the most fundamental changes we made to the scheme was we reduced the height. We were originally at eight stories, and through that design review panel, we agreed that the height of the building should reduce at the front and step back at the rear to the height we're providing for today. We also talked in that design review panel about the industrial nature of the building and wanted to somehow reflect that within the front design. I don't know if Brian can bring up a picture of our scheme and the front to show the roof profile. We sort of changed it to a sort of zigzag peak-looking arrangement, which we felt reflected the industrial nature of roofs from the sort of turn of the 19th century. So we changed the roof fenestration and design, we lowered the height. from the turn of the nineteenth century. So we changed the roof fenestration and design, we lowered the height to the front. We significantly increased the level of landscaping, both to amenity space for residents, but also as you may be able to see on the screen, with a green wall, which we felt really brought forward will uplift that area. It's a little bit dark. It's quite a busy road and we wanted to sort of brighten and bring forward that corner of Caversham with hopefully what we see as a modern commercial unit that will certainly have demand given its size and nature of it being a brand new modern unit. And also the green wall, which will hopefully benefit not only residents of this scheme, but residents of the entire area as well. We also updated the materials being used from what was initially proposed to a sort of more red brick approach that you can see now, which which we felt again through the design review process reflected more of the heritage of Reading in this particular area.
Thank you, Chair. I have no further questions.
Thank you. Do any further members of the committee have any questions to ask?
May please, Chair councillor Williams.
Please do.
Thank you, Chair. So I did put it in the chat, but I'm not sure it's working. Mine doesn't seem to be updating. And I can't see anyone else's. Apologies again, technical glitches. I'd like to ask Mr Berg a little bit about the report that we have in front of us, which is pretty clear in that if we agree that the loss of the important heritage asset is acceptable, then the replacement buildings should draw upon the heritage elements that made the previous building significant. And I think he's partially answered my question in responding to the previous councillor. But as I look at the design, I'd like to know a little bit more about how it specifically reflects the building that is is applied for to be removed. It could include appearance, scale or architectural quality, our report notes. And I'd be interested in what the applicant has to say on that. Thank you, Chair.
Certainly, and thank you for your question. I think possibly I did touch upon that in my previous answer, but we've tried where possible that ground floor to reflect, again, if we can bring an image up showing the ground floor fenestration and what we're proposing, that may be useful for members to be able to see. But with our material and our palette, which was altered during the design review panel to again reflect the more industrial nature of the existing building, I think we certainly significantly improved our initial design. As you can see, it's more on the other side, on the videos a little behind, on the other side of the building. But with the use of glass there and how we've allocated the windows as well as the roof fenestration, I think we've tried where possible to really try and create this visual industrial heritage, the brickwork glazed, the sort of red brick which I touched upon previously, linking through to the heritage at the time. And hopefully members will see that the design incorporates those materials and those ideas to sort of reflect back into the Reading's industrial past.
Thank you very much.
Voice of mute. Councillor Lovelock, please ask your question.
Councillor Lovelock, you were on mute.
I couldn't get the icons to come up, Chair, apologies. I just wanted to follow up. I wasn't quite sure what you were saying in your opening remarks about why it was difficult to design a building that incorporated the entire historic building. I just don't understand quite the point you were making. I think you mentioned COVID along the lines as well, but I, yes, a question about why can't you design something that maintains the building that people want to preserve. Thank you.
Councillor, thank you for your question. Clearly, COVID has come in at a late stage within this application. And I don't think that had any implication on where we were with our design and our intentions to redevelop this site. The current layout of the building, its current facade, the fenestration, locations of windows, the differing heights and scale of the roof, the alterations that have taken place over the previous hundred years have made it very difficult, in our eyes, impossible to retain and somehow bring forward for a redevelopment which retains elements of it. That's why we've worked with the design review panel to try and bring some of those elements back into what clearly is a new build scheme, but hopefully touches on the industrial nature. The building was demolished over over the last forty years, part demolition at the rear. The roof has been replaced in many areas. The internal layouts of the site with the columns holding up effectively what is a reasonably new roof make it practically impossible to retain what is there. That added to the cost and the ability to bring it all together with the different heights and the different ceiling heights of the ground floor versus the first floor makes it such that the building has effectively come to the end of its natural life. And whilst when we acquired it, it wasn't locally listed, it wasn't placed into the local listing report that Reading Council updated in May two thousand and nineteen. Seventy-one to seventy-two Caversham Road wasn't included in that report. We have, since it was locally listed, worked with our case officer and the design panel to put as much of the existing feel of the building into what we're proposing.
Thank you. Councillor Lovelock, do you have any follow-up questions?
Practically impossible, but not impossible. Would that be true?
Councillor, I come from a schooling where nothing is impossible, shall I say, but I think given the nature of this building and touching on councillor Page's early remarks about affordable housing and bringing forward schemes with social and economic benefits, I think it would be very, very difficult, if not impossible, to bring forward something which would have any sort of affordable housing, which I think then would make that an unattractive proposition for you as a council. The costs associated with it and the scale with which anything may be done would become very unviable if following every policy element that a development would need to do so. That's why I sort of indicated that I thought it was practically impossible.
Thank you. Councillors, do we have any further questions to ask at this point? Then I will thank you and we will progress to open this item to debate. Councillor Page, you had previously indicated that you'd wish to speak first. Please do so.
Yes, thank you, Chair. Can I thank members of the public and the applicants and the planning officer for, particularly Brian Cullen, for a very thorough and detailed report, which I think contains all the issues that we need to address as a planning committee. Can I just make the probably obvious comment that with regard to the summary that Brian has written on pages one hundred and twenty-eight onwards, the economic benefits from this scheme would be derived by any regeneration on this site and any new development. So it's not as though economic benefits can only be delivered through this scheme. That's self-evidently not the case. There would be benefits, but they're not ones that wouldn't be achieved by another application. Likewise, with the social benefits as well. What we have tonight, I would suggest before us is, notwithstanding a policy compliant application in terms of the affordable housing, is whether the loss of the locally listed and heritage features are justified and outweighed by other benefits. And clearly, that is something we need to discuss. And I'm not going to spend too much time on the heritage aspects, not because I don't regard them as important, but because I think councillor Roland will say more about that. I'm going to start off in terms of the site itself and the location and where it sits in our local plan aspirations. It is referenced in terms of the report and we are advised that this is in a transition zone. And policy CR eleven F of the local plan, page one hundred and forty-seven, if anybody wants to turn it up, refers to this area in the following term, densities will be lower than elsewhere in the station stroke river area. That's the site opposite the Hermes site and others, to reflect the proximity to low-rise residential areas. And the edge of the site nearest to the areas of terracing will require careful design treatment and respect the historic context of areas to the west, end of quote. And that point about the impact on those residential areas is picked up on page one hundred and ten, where we have the discussion about the scale and height. And the transition zone is referred to in paragraph six point three point nine. And in the following paragraph, there are some slightly contradictory comments, depending really on what view you're taking, whether you're looking down Caversham Road or whether you're standing on the opposite side of the road on number eighty, where the Hermes application is. But one thing we can be sure of, and the photos on the back page and page one three eight really show this, is that the proposed building, notwithstanding the fact that one floor was taken off during pre-app, as we've been told, is effectively the same height as what is currently proposed for the other side of the road. And it's important to emphasise, as David Neal on behalf of Bell Tower and Evelyn Williams has said, we haven't consented any scheme on that site. So it's indicative on the basis of what is proposed. There is no step down from that site as a transition zone would normally indicate. And officers try and overcome this, or Brian does in his report, by saying that no harmful tunneling effect would be created because of the narrowness of the frontage and the fact it occupies a corner plot. And that's at the top of page one hundred and eleven. But the fact is that this is a precedent-setting site. Shugard are looking to redevelop, the owners of the Pure Gym are looking to redevelop. And whatever is approved on this site will set the benchmark for those adjoining sites. We will hardly have a leg to stand on. Are we going to say, oh, well, we gave permission for them, but we want lower-rise developments on those adjoining sites? Of course not. And that is why this issue of height and transitioning is very important. And the need for, and I turn to page one hundred and twelve now, and I'm quoting what Brian has said in paragraph six point three point one four, does not negate the need for this development to proportionately scale down to the more modest brewery and malt house buildings. The proposal would not result in the most sympathetic transition between these two parts of the site as the difference in scale, seven to five to two point five, would occur over a small distance and be noticeable when approaching Caversham Road from the west. So you have there a pretty negative view from the west, hardly a transition site. So looking along the Caversham Road, the precedent that this would set would create the very tunnel effect that is claimed would not happen because it's such a small site. Well, obviously in isolation, it is a small site. But this report actually refers to the fact that Shugard are looking to redevelop. And the other site next door will also be in the same category. And I would just draw to the attention of colleagues, page ninety-seven. The proposal in question, a density of two hundred and seventy-five dwellings per hectare is calculated across the site. That's where the other side of the road. And again, you know, this is palpably not delivering the sort of lower-rise development that should be on this site. And I would suggest that the Shugard building, as currently should be, the benchmark height of a new development on the former Drews site. And that would be policy compliant, I would suggest, with policy CR eleven F and also our Reading Central Area Action Plan, which reinforces that and was again validated last year in the local plan. And the point is made on page ninety-four and paragraph six point one point four. The site continues to mark the transition between significant new planned development to the east, north of the station and low-rise traditional residential neighbourhood. Therefore, its role as a transition zone would continue. I defy anybody to tell me that this represents a building that should be sitting in a transition zone. It palpably doesn't. The density and the height alone negate that aspiration. And therefore, Chair, I just briefly on the heritage issue. Oh, sorry, just before I go to heritage issue, can I just quote something that was said in the pre-app response that was sent to the developer last July? And I thank the developer and the applicants for the opportunity that the three Abbey councillors had to meet them slightly before that. And where we in no way indicated our support for demolishing the building, but were interested obviously to hear their thoughts. And in his pre-app response last July, and this was for eight stories, not seven, but there's not much difference in terms of the impact. Mr Cullen said, the proposal has little differentiation in scale with the western block of the most recent Hermes scheme. And he then goes on to make the point about the transition zone. And I quote again, for any new building to effectively perform its role as a transition to a zone of low-density residential, it should not be viewed as a continuation of the higher-density development supported on the station and river area. The council would expect to see a building of a height which visually transitions to the lower density along Northfield Road, arriving at the two-story terraces. Officers cannot entertain a scheme that does not perform a logical transition to these lower-rise buildings without adequate justification. And to proceed with a building of this scale would weigh against the scheme in any planning balance. All that's changed since then, and this is the All that's changed since then, and this is the element that obviously we have to put in the balance, and this is where I come down in a contrary view. I do not believe a half million pound offsite affordable housing contribution buys the demolition on clearance of this whole site and this building of exceptional value to the town. And the value of the building, more will be said about that, but nobody can gain say that. We have had it validated independently. And I have to say through you, Chair, to Mr Berg, I take a dim view of a description of this building in his email to us today, quote, as a nondescript brick retail warehouse with a largely late twentieth century character. I do not accept that definition. It suits the applicant to belittle the building itself and to exaggerate, I believe, the difficulties in bringing forward a scheme that would retain the facade and the external features of this building. We're not wanting the inside to be kept. We've accepted that that damage was done years ago, but the value of this building, as David Neal and Evelyn Williams and others have said, rests in the exterior and the heritage that that represents to Reading. So Chair, I would formally propose that the application be refused. I have some more detailed wording, which I'm happy to come forward with later, but would formally propose at this stage that the application be refused. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Page. Councillor Rowland, who wish to speak?
Thank you, Chair. I commend a lot of the points that councillor Page made in in what's something that we have to judge as an unbalanced decision. So what we've got here is we've got a an affordable housing offer, an attractive offer, and a building that has gone through some some challenges in in design and reaching something that that has got a green improvement, that has responded in terms of material and those kind of situations and believes that they have responded to the industrial heritage. I did I did question Mr Berg about that and I questioned him and he provided a bit of of context in his, the way he spoke with and worked with residents and others in developing an industrial heritage kind of response to this. However, I think I will have to very much concur with councillor Page on this. This is really a building that was locally listed for a reason. We have a small local list in this in this town and we have not always done right by it. I believe there's thirteen buildings. I tried to go and quickly count them on there and a lot of them have gone. But that does not mean that this one also should go. The fact of the matter is, is that the local listing application, that process that they go through or anyone goes through to put up a building for local listing, was probably one of the most robust and intriguing and made for an interesting read of any local listing application that had come forward. As a matter of fact, I've enjoyed reading it several times. But so I just want to have people or help people to understand why this was locally listed and and the real importance for it, because perhaps people look at it and they go, well, it's it's not a beautiful building. I don't maybe get it. Well, heritage is not always beautiful. This is a warehouse. This is a, this is an industrial building, so to say. It has had many uses over the years. It was in a malt house connotation that that Evelyn Williams expressed that was its historical association to to the town and also its industrial importance. We have lost a lot of these malt houses throughout the town and there are very few examples. So when you talk about heritage value, the rarity is really, really important. And this is a rare child anymore in this town because we have lost several. So the importance to that is further expanded by the fact that it is sitting within a group of buildings that have worked collectively in the malt house capacity and over several different trades throughout the the past hundred years or so. So that is very, also very important. It does not matter that the interior is not of a of a very high quality. And I'll quote something from the from the local listing application, if I could. Amber Patrick, who is who wrote the strategy for the historical industrial environment for maltings in England for English Heritage, reviewed the building and said, all facades are interesting enough to be retained, especially as they represent a survival survivor of Reading's once extensive and important malting industry. So that was an expert and a pretty substantial one weighing in on the fact that we've got something valuable here. I know that there was correlation, people, I think David Neal made the point about how because of its scale, it really does fit in with what is happening on the west side of Caversham Road, an area that they have been appealing to the council to make an area of local, a local area of special character. So it does fit in with that neighbourhood. And back to councillor Page's point, if we were to go significantly taller, say than Shugard or something like that, we will create a tunnel and we will essentially seal off a neighbourhood. This building relates beautifully right now to this neighbourhood. It's, you can tell it's adopted. It's got a petition that the local neighbourhood persons have all have all gathered behind this and rallied behind this. They care about the building and it makes sense because it is part of our streetscape heritage, part of our townscape heritage and part of that neighbourhood. If we were to allow a building at this height that is proposed tonight, councillor Page is entirely accurate, this will be the low water mark. There will be everybody else turning around and building on higher up. And this would only be the start because eventually you might see even further down Caversham Road, people wanting to build higher along there and and to remove terraced housing there, this, that and the other. So it is really, it's really important that we stop right now. This building is easy enough to design well into. We're not saying keep it exactly as it is. As a matter of fact, the modern sixty s frontage on Caversham Road is really something that could probably be ditched because then you go back to what the industrial charm of the building really is. There is a poorly done nineteen sixty some odd outer skin to that. And and so people see that and they don't really see the building underneath. It is very possible to make housing out of this building. It it's not much left inside. That's pretty easy. I have seen a number of warehouse buildings. As a matter of fact, it's quite the trend all over the country to take these buildings and utilise these buildings and reutilise these buildings, which this building has done for a hundred and thirty plus years. So I think actually a hundred and fifty years or so. So it is my opinion that we we have a rare animal and it is also the opinion of all the people that signed that petition. And that that is also important. We need to think about keeping Reading, Reading where we are able. And by holding on to something like this, which is a, which is a rare gem of our industrial heritage, that's the way we're going to be able to do it. Affordable housing is an attractive offer. I I understand that, but we've got, we've got developments on the other side of the road that are going to pull the weight in giving us the housing that we're required to to build and the affordable housing that we're required to build. We don't need this to be that workhorse that's going to be on the opposite side of the road. There is no business for this on the opposite side of the road. And that is, that's really, I think, what I wanted to say. I do agree with councillor Page. I think that there is justification on balance. I just went through my personal on balance exercise right there. And I've drawn up with the fact that we need to be refusing this application this evening. So thank you very much, Chair.
Thank you. Do any other councillors wish to speak to this item?
So I have no other councillors currently indicating to speak. If you wish to butt in, please, in the chat. I'll have a couple of brief comments, which is, I like the building. It's an attractive building. It's just an entirely the wrong location for me. The impact on the character of the area that it's going to have, which is to just completely change that area and particularly have that overbearing nature upon the rest of what is the low rise, typically two story residential terrorist homes behind that, is just something that's hard to swallow.
And as I have other councillors speaking, I'll call councillor Devine, followed by councillor Ennis and then councillor Robinson. Councillor Devine, please address the committee.
Yes, I have to say, I actually agree. This is a very attractive building that's being proposed here. And I certainly like the colonnade and the green wall. And there are various other attributes and use of air source, heat pumps and solar panels and various other modern items. It's all a, for me, a very positive aspect of building. And I'm not actually that much in favour of the heritage aspect of the argument we've heard this evening. I think the one aspect that we might miss is the is the north face along Northfield Road, where we can see this was actually an old historic building, but that's the one wall. And I think the rest of it, I'm not so sure about. Nevertheless, I think my my issue with the building is really its height. It is a, as far as I can see, a splendid building, but it's it's over the top in for its position on Caversham Road. Had it been four or five stories and stopped there, I think I would have been persuaded that it might be worthwhile replacing the existing building despite the heritage argument. But that's, I think, an issue that's up for debate. As I said, not so strongly influenced by the heritage argument, but the height argument certainly does worry me. And had this building been a story or two or three lower, I would have been more pre more positively disposed towards accepting. But as it is, I don't think I can, Chair. Thank you.
Thank you. Renus, please address the committee.
No, thank you. I I'm pleased that a number of colleagues on the councillors on the planning committee mentioned the attractiveness of the building because I thought I was alone in that. I do think it's nice. I do think it's good. I think it's the ideal about the green that's on there. I would have, and I welcome the affordable housing, which I think is a big sell. I would normally have supported this without even thinking about it. I have concerns about the heritage. I know, being a Reading person, Drews for a long time, the go to place for your DIY, but I had a look at the building myself because I thought that's not an old building, that's not a heritage building, a bit of a cultural desert myself, I have to admit. But looking at the building itself, there is definitely listing reasons for local listing. It is, it is an old building. It is of an heritage site in that area with a history. And I think that building anywhere else wouldn't have been a problem. I haven't even got a problem with the height, to be honest with you. I think after I've heard tonight, the issues of the heritage of the current bit, the current building, as you can see there, on the the front frontages is, has got listing on it. It looks different, doesn't it? That's a real problem. And I know I kind of feel for the for the agent who has engaged with with councillors on the planning application without pressure. I was going to ask a question, what would happen if you if you were compelled to build within that context? I would like to see housing within the context of the building itself to show this, you know, to keep the heritage, to keep the fabric of the building whilst working on the inside, which shouldn't be a problem. So yes, I I have an issue about the heritage, but everything else I thought was positive. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Renus. Councillor Robinson?
Thank you, Chair. I think the government white paper on planning isn't the only thing that we're actually coming out in support of this evening, or the the opposition to it, I should say. You know, I'm, I find myself in the strange position again with agreeing with everything councillor Page has said and with councillor Rowland and councillor Ennis and councillor Devine to a certain degree. The the design, in my opinion, looks great. It's just the wrong place for it and at a cost of losing a very valuable heritage asset to to Reading. It's part of our history. We should be protecting it. I know it doesn't look that good from the front in terms of the sixty s facade, but take that away and we've got a very, very nice looking building, in my opinion. And I think housing could easily work within that, within those premises. So I would certainly welcome a proposal to actually build within the build accommodation within the existing structure. And rightly said, the, you know, the actual plans, the the height, in my opinion, would look like it, it would stand out like a sore thumb for the present time, were it not for the possibility of the neighbouring properties taking on board higher developments based on, you know, should we agree to this this evening? I also find it strange in terms of the actual artist impression, putting, you know, ghosting a building across the road, which has no development agreement on it so far. Yes, it makes it look a little bit better in terms of the size of the proposed development, but, you know, I think that is a bit of a red herring in terms of, you know, trying to make the height look look better. So in my opinion, I will be refusing this application this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Robinson. Do we have any further indications to speak? Councillor Sukala, please address the committee.
Thank you, Chair. I'm loving how amicable all of us as colleagues on planning are tonight and agreeing on the application we're seeing. I just wanted to take the point to basically summarise some of my thoughts on it and agree with my colleagues. I couldn't agree more with John Ennis, actually councillor Ennis, his thoughts on the application. I think it's a solid design. It's really good and this is a quality of application we'd like to see more of. So regardless of what the outcome of the decision is, we want you to know that it's a quality application, it's what we want to see more of. It just has to be right and suitable for the location. And it's really important for us in Reading that we do try and maintain our heritage. So I just wanted to make that point clear, that it's a fantastic application. I love the design of it, actually. I think it looks really good. But like like my colleagues have reiterated already tonight, the height is the issue and we really do want to make sure that we can keep some of the beautiful parts of Reading that make it have this lovely narrative. So thank you, Chair, for letting me speak on that.
Thank you, councillor Sukala. I find myself somewhat in agreement with all the councillors. And the more I look at the building, I would love it if it stood as a standalone building, just anywhere else, anywhere else. It it is so incongruous, its current sighting, that the only way to knit it in is to then raise the other buildings around it, not simply on the Shugard site, but particularly the building to the other. the building to the other side, which is a much lower building, which would so fundamentally change the character of that area that it would be hard to accept. I will accept that it's a very unbalanced decision. Is, to me, an attractive building. That's not sufficient to overcome the heritage impact of the previous building, but is a sound consideration. It provides a more than policy compliant affordable housing contribution, which is still a good public benefit. For me, primarily the height. But what we've got is a lot of discomfort for different reasons, but all agreeing that it's just, to my mind, just not right for that location. You previously indicated that you would have somewhat more articulate reasons for refusal, that you had wished to address the committee on. Can I please invite you to do so?
Yes, Chair, I would propose that the application be refused for the following summary reasons. By virtue of the complete removal of a building classified as a non-designated heritage asset, the proposal is considered to cause, or the application is considered to cause substantial harm to the special architectural and historic interest of that asset. Also, the application fails to adequately demonstrate that the retention of the architectural and historical significance building through reuse has been fully explored. In terms of the height, Chair, I would suggest that policy CR11F has not been in any way delivered. That's relating to the densities and the relationship to the adjoining residential areas. Policy EN4 relating to locally important heritage assets likewise, and policy EN1, which is the protection and enhancement of the historic environment. And I suppose the final point is going back to the heritage reasons for refusal, reduction in significance of those remaining buildings to the rear, resulting in less than substantial harm to those remaining non-designated heritage assets. So I think there's sufficient there, Chair, for a refusal, which I would propose. And I think that takes on board the points that have been raised this evening as well. I respect that some colleagues don't think the height issue is as important, but believe you me, the argument of precedent is an important one. So those are clearly reasons for refusal. So I would propose, Chair.
Thank you. I would now like to ask the planning officer if they wish to make any comments on the contributions heard today.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair. And thank you councillors. Yeah, I think there's quite a lot of points made there. Obviously, quite well acknowledging the positives and negatives of the application that we have in front of us. Following on from councillor Page's sort of summary of concerns, if I may, as I understand it, these would form two separate refusal reasons. The first being the removal of the non-designated heritage asset, its effect on its local significance, and the effect upon the cluster from which it sits, the substantial harm that would be caused by its removal, detaching those buildings further from their former industrial relationship and reducing their cultural contribution is what I'm receiving. In this case, the benefits, as discussed by many councillors tonight, are not considered to significantly outweigh the harm caused by virtue of this loss. And therefore, the development would be contrary to EN1, EN4 of the local plan and in PPF, section 16. The second refusal reason, or the second area of concern, which doesn't necessarily directly relate to heritage, is the scale, the replacement building being out of scale with its neighbouring buildings within the adjoining site, so those existing buildings on site, and to the west along Northfield Road and along Caversham Road. The development would fail to appropriately transition down to the more modestly scaled buildings due to the abrupt change in the building height and proximity. This would therefore be contrary to our policy CC7, I remember, CC7, EN1, EN4 of the local plan. In addition to those two areas of concern identified by councillors, there would also, if councillors do vote to refuse the scheme, there would also be the need for additional reason for refusal to cover section 106. Thank you.
Chair, can I just ask Brian Condon, he referenced a different policy. I haven't got the full thing in front of me, the full local plan in front of me. I do have it somewhere on the desk, but I've lost it. Why is the reference to CR11F not included in that?
Thanks councillor. Sorry, yes, I did have a point actually on CR11F. The site is not located within the site allocation CR11F. It is adjoining to it. Sorry, I should have responded to that. Whilst that site allocation and the planning principles, master planning principles within that are very useful in establishing a level of acceptability for this location, the fact that the site is not within that site allocation would prevent us from using that as a policy for a specific refusal reason.
I'll take issue with that in terms of the plan that's shown in the local plan. But the argument about the proximity and the transition zone, though, is one that you accept in your report, and that is referenced in CR11F as well.
That's correct. To acknowledge the policy and what it's trying to seek is one thing. And the fact that the site is very close to it across Northfield Road from that allocated site, the site has a role to perform in responding not only to surrounding site allocations across Caversham Road, across Northfield Road, and the more domestic and traditional urban layout to the west. But it's not, as I say, it's not in conflict with a site allocation policy as such. But again, because of the concern raised and the harm identified over its scale, it is contrary to our wider design policies as a starting point.
Okay, thank you. Chair, move if we go to the vote. So I have to ask Wendy Ballison from Legal first, slightly premature. Wendy, do you have any comments to make?
And I will have. Sorry, Chair, I had difficulty with my mute button then. I've got nothing to add to what's already been said. There appears to be, you know, quite a few reasons for refusal that accord with the local plan and what's required if members wish to go that way.
Thank you. I will second councillor Page's motion that we move forward for refusal on the basis of the proposed reasons. Councillors, is there any dissent for raising the motion? I will now call councillors to vote on the motion, which will be for the refusal for the reasons stated, and the refusal for the reasons stated, or to abstain when I call your name.
Sorry, Chair, sorry to butt in. Because it's a recommendation for a grant in the first place, we have to vote on what's on the agenda and in the papers first before putting the motion for the refusal and then voting on that. That's, I'm sorry, but that's how our constitution requires it to be done.
And I ask for clarification, would it be acceptable to raise the motion to accept, then not call a voice vote?
No, no, I'm afraid not. Sorry. We need to go through the normal procedure whereby it's the recommendation that's on the table first is then voted on accordingly before the then second motion to refuse the application is put forward.
Could I, as Chair, seek to withdraw the current recommendation on the table? We're going to move to the vote. We'll put the officer recommendation as printed to the vote. Will we vote for the officer recommendation, against or abstain? Councillor Duvain? Councillor Duvain, could you please make your will be known to the committee?
Against the proposal to grant.
Councillor Ennis?
Against the proposal to grant.
Councillor Lovelock?
Against the proposal to grant.
Councillor Page?
Again.
Thank you, councillor Robinson?
Against the proposal to grant.
Councillor Roland?
Against.
Councillor Sukalek?
Against the proposal to grant.
Councillor Stamford-Bill?
Against the proposal to grant.
Councillor Josh Williams? We will now move for the motion proposed by councillor Page to refuse for the reasons stated, to which I will second. I will further add to the proposal that we delegate the final wording of the refusal to officers in consultations with more councillors, councillors Page, Roland and Mohamed Ayo. Would that be acceptable to councillors? Thank you.
Yeah.
I will now put the.
Chair, sorry, did you just want to vote yourself on the original motion?
Against.
Thank you.
Which unanimous against. We'll move forward. It's a late hour and there have now been 13 hours in work. Councillor Duvain, do you wish to vote for the refusal, against the refusal or abstain?
Refusal.
Councillor Ennis?
For the refusal.
Councillor Lovelock?
All.
Councillor Page?
All.
Councillor Robinson?
For the refusal.
Councillor Roland?
For the refusal.
Councillor Sukalek?
For the refusal, Chair.
Councillor Stamford-Bill?
For the refusal.
Councillor Williams?
All.
And myself will also vote for the refusal for the stated reasons with the delegation for officers to agree the final wording with councillors Page, Roland and Mohamed Ayo. He is not a member of this committee, but is also an Abbey Ward councillor. Thank you. We will now move to agenda item 11, St Paul's Church, Whitley Wood Lane. At this point, I'd like to do a mic check for councillors Rachel Eden and Mickey Lang. Could they please say hello to the meeting?
Hello, councillor McKenna, Rachel Eden here. I hope you can hear me.
We can indeed, and we can also see you. Councillor Lang?
Yes, me too. I'm here.
Perfect. Thank you both. And I will call Alison Namoa, the case officer, to please present your report.
Thank you, Chair. Hopefully you can hear me. The proposal is for the redevelopment of the current St Paul's Church site in Whitely for a new church building, two one-bedroom flats, a health centre, associated parking and landscaping. As well as the demolition of existing church buildings, the proposal would involve the loss of two semi-detached houses, although one is currently vacant and in poor state of repair, a protected ash tree and a number of other existing trees. The proposed health centre would be a replacement for the south reading surgery and the Whitley Wood Lane surgery, which have now closed. And it is envisaged it would serve up to approximately 12,500 patients. It would provide a broad range of health-related services and training provision. The church building would enable the church to continue with its existing range of community services and activities, but with an enhanced building, they would have the potential to extend their community offering. The applicant has provided an indicative activities table, which is included at paragraph 2.7 of the main report. A number of issues were raised through neighbour consultation, including with regard to noise and disturbance, loss of privacy, parking, security, design of the health building and loss of trees. The proposed health centre is simple in form, which is considered necessary so that even though it's taller than the proposed church building, it does not compete with nor detract from it. It was considered important the church would have street presence and would reflect elements of the design of the listed building opposite. The health centre would be sited along with the church on the northern boundary as far as possible from surrounding residences in order to limit any potential overbearing effects. With respect to the loss of the TPO tree and other trees, the natural environment officer accepted as set out in paragraph 4.6 of the report, that the proposed landscaping layout, which was amended during the course of the application, includes for 15 trees reasonably spaced in locations where they can grow to maturity without inevitable conflict with property, and that trees on the frontage would enhance the verdant character of Whitley Wood Lane. There was a recognition of the significant community benefit of the proposal and an acceptance, therefore, in the reduction of the number of trees on site as an exceptional circumstance in this particular instance, but subject to replacement trees off-site within Whitely Ward, and a section 106 obligation is included in this regard. In terms of other immunity issues raised, measures including obscure glazing, acoustic fencing, restricted hours of use and site management plan, there are conditions recommended to address these matters. The scheme does still include for two one-bedroom flats of a generous size, which would be fully accessible. Following the preparation of the main report, a neighbour raised an issue with regard to the original ecological report, and the senash tree to the southern boundary was identified as requiring a further survey with respect to bats. The council's ecologists confirmed that initially, a further visual survey to determine whether this tree would have the potential to host bat roosts would be sufficient. This work has been undertaken and it's been confirmed that the potential is negligible and therefore no further surveys are required in this instance. In addition, a further late objection was submitted after the preparation of the update report. This is from a previous objector, and the issues raised regarding loss of trees, survey of the tree. Parking have already been addressed.
Sorry, Alison, we just lost the last thing you were saying.
In either the main or update report. The official touch in our business partner, can you still hear me?
We can hear you much better now. We lost the feed at the point at which you were saying that about the late objection.
So, okay, I'll go back. So in addition, a further late objection was submitted after the preparation of the update report. This is from a previous objector, and the issues raised regarding loss of trees, survey of the tree and. Um, and the issues raised regarding loss of trees, survey of the tree and parking have already been addressed within either the main or update reports. The objector in this late objection also refers to an alternative site within the retail business park on Imperial Way and specifically references the Toys R Us building as a suitable location for a health centre. That site is not the one before us and is not material to the planning decision. The update report also includes written statements from Alec Sharma MP in support of the scheme and a statement from the agent, as well as confirmation of amended plans to include lift access for the flats. The co-location of two key community buildings in the sustainable location would clearly bring a range of community benefits to the wider area of South Reading. Such benefits from a large and enhanced church building and a health centre offering a range of healthcare services are considered to outweigh the limited policy infringements with respect to the loss of two family-sized dwellings, a TPO tree and with respect to replacement tree planting. It would meet national and local policy objectives and the scheme is therefore recommended for approval, subject to the conditions and section 106 obligations as set out in the main report. Thank you Chair.
Thank you Alison. I'm now going to call councillor Rachel Eden to address the committee. There is no formal time limit on your contribution, however, we, unlike other public speakers, we will not be able to ask you any questions. Please do address the committee.
Thank you councillor McKenna, I will also remember that the, the committee are having a long meeting tonight, so I'll try to be brief, but, and this is, um, a proposal that I think has been many years in the coming, not just at this site, but sites have been looked at elsewhere. And improved healthcare provision in the, the southern tip of our borough and in Whitely Ward generally, is something that has been a sort of long-held ambition by councillors and the community. And I think it's actually a tribute to the way that the Whitely churches and our local NHS have worked together to bring this particular proposal forward. There are some concerns with it, which I'll just briefly mention, but Alison Namoa, the officer, has done a very good job, I think, of summarising some of the correspondence we as ward councillors have had. And the councillor Lang and myself, you know, we feel that generally the feedback we've had from residents has been extremely positive about this proposal. It's been welcomed by the community because of the benefits it will bring. And, you know, Whitely has had a lot of development over the last decade or more. Since I've been a councillor, we have had thousands of new residents into Whitely Ward itself. And of course, we're seeing development to the south of us in the Wokingham Borough area and that it comes on top of already, I think, a lack of provision of GP services, which we know more than ever now are so vital for our communities. And so I'm sure the committee will want to look particularly at the issue around replacement trees and the concerns around parking that have been raised. And but I do hope that the committee will, will look at this and see this as a benefit to a community that really deserves excellent healthcare provision. And up till now, the, while the, the doctors and the other medical staff have been doing a great job, they have not been able to do it in the, the buildings that they deserve and that the community deserve. I mean, in terms of the replacement, I was listening to the previous item and while I have got some fond personal memories of the St Paul's Play Barn, I don't think that that's a building that will be mourned by many in Whitely. And I think the replacement will be, you know, more than adequate in terms of providing the ability to have those facilities, those groups for children and their families, but in a much better environment. So I, you know, I'll hand over if, through you Chair, to my colleague councillor Lang, but I do hope that the committee will consider this proposal favourably.
Thank you. Councillor Lang, please address the committee.
Yeah, thank you Chair. I'll be brief, most points have been covered. And of course, I endorse the words of my colleague councillor Eden. I've had many discussions with residents around Whitely, but I can also speak as a resident when I say there is overwhelming support for this new development. The services it will bring our community can, can only be a positive. So I'll just leave it there really, thank you.
Councillor Lang? I will now open the item for discussion at committee. Do any councillors wish to speak to this item? And it will fall to myself. Ah, councillor Stamford-Bale, please do so.
Thank you very much Chair. Yes, I would say that it has been a very long time coming to get an appropriate site for a new surgery in Whitely. When I was an executive director of Reading Primary Care Trust as it was about 15 years ago, we spent a lot of time poring over maps, trying to work out where we could put another GP surgery because there was a growing population and there was a lot of old surgery buildings which are not really fit for purpose anymore. So I think it's absolutely fantastic news that we've got this application before us tonight. It's brilliant that the church and the NHS are working together here. I hope on one front that having a, a good building for the health team will help recruit GPs because it's very difficult to recruit GPs at the moment, a high-cost area like Reading. And it's great with the church, they've got, one of the things I'm particularly keen on is men cap, run their day service from there for adults with learning disabilities. They're some of the most vulnerable members of our community. So it is really good that we're looking at getting them into a new building that we purpose-built. So I very much support this application and I very much hope that the rest of the committee will as well, thank you.
Thank you. Do any further councillors wish to speak? And I will. I will also echo the comments of my ward colleagues and councillor Stamford-Bale in welcoming the positive contribution that this development will have to Reading and the Whitely area that has seen considerable development at Wharton Grange and at Kennedy Island with an already unmet health provision need, which has resulted from the loss of other GP surgeries in the area. Has great merits to it with the church and its provision for our local community, the healthcare provision both as a GP surgery, but also as a facility that will train the next set of GPs, F1s, F2s, doctors, as well as medical students that will see skilled staff coming through Whitely with a connection to the area and the needs of our residents. There are some areas which are not ideal within the proposal, as there are with every planning application coming forward. However, the public benefits of this so outweigh everything else. And I'd like to thank case officer who has put in adequate provision for me to mitigate the loss of the trees with the re-provision elsewhere within Whitely, that the speed the traffic calming measures will be secured by section 278 to move slightly along, that I have no particularly strong problems at all. The minor issues are minor and have been addressed by condition. Fully endorse this. Without prejudging what I'm about to vote, I will now raise the proposal to endorse the officer recommendations as printed in the report. Councillor Sukale, as my vice-chair, could you please second the motion?
Absolutely Chair, second the motion.
Sukale, I'm now going to call officer, sorry, before I do so, so I apologise. I wish to call Alison Namoa, case officer, if you've got any comments on what the councillors have spoken.
I have no further comments to make, thank you.
Alison? Wendy Badison from Legal, do you have any comments?
No comments Chair, thank you.
Now I'll move to the motion to accept. Councillor Devine, will you vote for the printed recommendation, against the printed recommendation or abstain?
For.
Thank you councillor Devine. Councillor Ennis?
For.
Councillor Lovelock?
For.
Councillor Page?
For.
Councillor Robinson?
For the recommended.
Sukale? Councillor Sukale, are you-
For the recommendation, sorry, mute button, apologies.
Often enough, thank you. Councillor Stamford-Bale? Councillor Josh Williams?
For.
Myself, obviously, for.
And councillor Karen Rowland that you missed, for. It's okay, it's a long night.
Falls over the other side of the list. Long night, yes. That is entirely unanimous. We now move to agenda item nine, Cates Grove Primary School, and I will call Richard Etoff to speak to the report. Thank you.
Uh, thank you Chair. Um, there's no update report for this item. This is a combined report for this proposal which seeks planning and listed building consent for minor works to Cates Grove Primary School. The Henry Building at Cates Grove is grade two listed and this means that all relevant structures within the curtilage of the school are also listed. There are two main elements to this proposal. The first is remedial works to supporting buttresses which have failed and a stretch, along a stretch of retaining wall, these need to be removed and replaced. And the second involves some minor adjustments to flues and the installation of a tall flu flu pipe on the rear of the Henry Building. Both are considered to raise little concern in terms of the impacts of the character and architectural interest of the listed building. Although there is no update report, there are two minor things to update you of. The RBC Environmental Protection Team have confirmed they have no objections. The applicant though has not confirmed the use of materials details, so the relevant conditions will need to be applied to supply those. They are however of the, the need to do this and so it would be a pre-commencement condition on both the planning and listed building consents we to grant. So the recommendation is to grant planning permission and listed building consent. Thank you Chair.
Thank you. Councillors, do you have any comments to make? I see, councillor Roland, please do.
Yes, sorry, sorry Chair, I just realised I didn't type in. Yes, I, I, I would just like to quickly commend this, I mean, there is, there is nothing really that would bother the listed building, this is actually taken care of quite well in respect to the listed building and I know it will be a pleasing result for, for local residents too and for the school, so thank you.
Thank you councillor Roland. As one of those local residents that lives just across the road, I'm more than happy to see this proposal come forward and quite content to move forward with the pre-commencement conditions as stated by Richard Etoff. Wendy Badison, do you have any comments to make at this time?
Uh, no Chair, thank you.
I will now put the officer recommendation to the vote. Councillors, please respond with for, against or abstain when I call your name. Councillor Devine?
For.
Councillor Ennis?
For.
Councillor Lovelock?
For.
Councillor Page?
For.
Councillor Robinson?
For the recommendation.
Councillor Roland?
For.
Councillor Sukale?
For the recommendation Chair.
Councillor Bailey? Councillor Williams?
For.
And for myself, I will also vote for the recommendation. Therefore, it is unanimous and the application is granted. Next, we move to agenda item 10, Unit 1 Stadium Way Tilehurst, and I will call Julie Williams to introduce the report.
Thank you Chair. The application site lies on the junction of Scours Lane and Stadium Way. Unit 1 was, was seen of a, quite a major fire early in this year or the end of last year, quite recently. It has now been demolished, so this application is seeking to replace that building with a new unit. The unit will be of a similar scale in appearance to the original building but facilitating more flexible use in the future. There is an update report for you which confirms that the transport have no objections, subject to conditions, environmental protection officers have no objections against subject to recommended conditions, and we've had no objections from the Environment Agency either and we have a relevant condition in the main report for you. So the recommendation is to grant planning permission, thank you Chair.
Thank you. Councillors, does anyone wish to address the committee? Councillor Ennis?
I won't take long, I mean, as someone who witnessed, well, saw the fire from where I am and remember the seriousness of it, it's really good that the, the agents and the, and the developers are moving very quickly to, to replace the burnt-out buildings with somewhere else, so it shows recovery is, is good and quick and wish them well and support the application.
Thank you.
Echo councillor Ennis's comments. I'm very happy to see the proposal come forward to continue to secure the employment history of the site. I will now move forward to the vote. Before I do so, I will ask Julie Williams if you've got any further comments.
No comments Chair, thank you.
Wendy Badison from Legal, any comments?
Uh, no comments from me Chair, thank you.
Councillor Sukale, could you please second my motion which is to accept the proposal with the printed recommendations in the officer report?
Yes, of course Chair, second your motion for that.
Thank you. I will now ask for councillors to vote whether they vote for, against or abstain the recommendation to approve. Councillor Devine?
For.
Councillor Ennis?
For.
Councillor Lovelock? Councillor Page?
For.
Councillor Robinson?
For the recommendation.
Councillor Roland?
For.
Councillor Sukale?
For the recommendation.
Councillor Stamford-Bale?
For.
Councillor Williams?
For.
Just, I also vote for. That is unanimous and the application is- We've now come to the end of our agenda and I call the meeting to close at exactly nine o'clock. Thank you and enjoy your evenings.
Good night. Chair, have a good night everyone.
Thank you Chair, thank you very much everyone.
Thank you.
Thanks Chair, thanks everyone.